Thank A and U for being willing to give us their grand round time to enable us to undertake this consultation. And I'm going to hand over to Daniel from Justice and Creative Services. Thank you.
Thanks so much for the warm welcome, Janet. Yes, my name is Daniel Eung. I'm the Executive Group Manager of Legislation Policy Programs in JAX. And I'm talking to you today because my team will be leading the work to introduce the legislation on voluntary assisted dying in the Territory. For us, we're kind of quite diverse division. We look after about 160 pieces of legislation across the statute book. By the end of the year, we hope to pass around 20 pieces of legislation. And I guess I mentioned that in the context that, you know, we know that for government, this will be one of the most important and impactful pieces of work that we do. To support the Human Rights Minister to bring forward this legislation at the end of the year. So. So really welcome the feedback and thanks for Janet for giving such kind of a fulsome description of the context that we're operating in. So my team, as I said, is kind of responsible for running the public consultation, research, development of policy, and ultimately the preparation of the legislation around voluntary assisted dying. By way of history, I guess the Territory's legislative capacity to pass laws comes from the Commonwealth. For quite some time, the Territory's been inhibited in its ability to do that by the Commonwealth Self Government Act. But we've seen the kind of change of posture there and in kind of as recently as Q4 last year. That the Territory's now kind of got its right back to legislate in this space, which has precipitated all the action that we're undertaking right now. Obviously, working really closely with colleagues in Health and CHS on this reform. But we know it's kind of an issue that is, as Janet said, kind of personal importance to people, but also, I guess, in this process, we're really keen to kind of harness the professional views and that we know are out there. And certainly all the expertise in your organization. The discussion I was hoping to have today was just kind of twofold. Once to just give you an update about the public consultation process that we're currently undertaking. What we've done so far, where we hope to go in the next couple of weeks. And also kind of to just highlight for you some of the key issues that we're really keen to get views on. The centerpiece of the consultation process is obviously this discussion paper. But I'll probably just kind of walk through a couple of the key issues that we're really hoping to get views on. And as Janet says, you know, it'll be totally a matter of. For all of you about your kind of personal decisions about whether you do engage and provide some feedback on that basis or not. But there's some areas where I think we particularly welcome the expertise of all the people in this room and online as well. Just to go to the first part, here we go. Just to go to the first part, as I said, we're in the middle of an eight-week consultation process at the moment. The main focus for the community, I think, is, you know, the discussion paper, which is out there, and I'll kind of take you through some of the really key points over the next slide. But I want to really reinforce as well that, I guess, acknowledging that voluntary assisted dying is an issue that kind of crosses, I guess, even within government. So many different interests, ministerial portfolios. That also translates to our community as well. So there's a range of different, you know, areas in the community and groups. That we know we need to engage with on a direct basis and kind of proactively seek their feedback. So to that end, we've been running a range of roundtables, which colleagues in JAX but also CHS and Health have been involved in. And, you know, this engagement we're having today is just one of those engagements that we're kind of working through. I did want to let you all know that we've already had a dedicated roundtable for health professional organizations, including the AMA. The Society of Hospital Pharmacists of Australia, the Australian Association of Psychologists and several others. And we've also had a dedicated roundtable for private health facilities and residential aged care facilities. What's Next is a plan to hold some more workshops like today's with clinicians. The End of Life and Palliative Care Consumer Reference Group and health non-government organizations in the coming weeks. More broadly, and this kind of goes to my point about the impact across our entire community and across our entire government. We're listening to stakeholders from across the disability sector, First Nations peoples and everyday Canvarians as well, just to understand. Their suite of kind of personal and professional views on this topic. Consultation ends on 6 April. From there, we'll go through some kind of normal government processes and kind of briefing government on the outcome of the consultation. But for us, that's really kind of some time for some core work where we do kind of try and land on some kind of important policy settings for what we. Recommend to government in terms of the model for voluntary assisted dying in the Territory. And there's some more details on the link at the bottom of the slides. The second part I want to talk through is just some of the issues that we're asking the community about. Also kind of highlighting particularly for this group, some of the issues that we think will be particularly relevant to all of you. As I said, you can find this discussion paper on the website, but. One of the things that we're hoping you can do just in advance of hearing from Dr. Fellingham is kind of keeping some of these concepts in your mind. Particularly for the really insightful and hopefully impactful Q and A session that you'll have with Dr. Fellingham at the end as well. So we focused on these topics because other jurisdictions around the world and indeed Australia. Have grappled with these particular issues in developing their own models. On one level, it's kind of unfortunate that Territory's kind of had to wait so long to have its own legislative capacity, but. The benefit, I guess, is as well as having the opportunity to review other people's models and have some learnings from it if it's possible. The first and second topics on the screen are those that, you know, particularly we think this group might be most interested in. So we've got some items in, hopefully in yellow on your screen. Age, scope of practice and conscientious objection. And these are things that Janet specifically asked I draw your attention to in the context of the overall consultation package, but also this session today. On the topic of eligibility, a few kind of key things I want to work through. Diagnosis and prognosis. In other places in Australia, a person's condition must be advanced, progressive and expected to cause deaths within six to 12 months. In other words, voluntary assisted dying is the only kind of practical available option to them in their final months of terminal illness. Suffering, so around Australia, the person's condition must also be causing suffering that is unbearable for the person. That's a broader concept in Tasmania where a person can also access that procedures. If treatment is causing them unbearable suffering or if they expect their condition. Or treatment will cause them unbearable suffering in the future. Capacity, really interesting issue in the context of the move in supported or the move to support decision making across Australia. Kind of ACT being one of the more recent entries to that group. But around Australia, people who have lost their ability to make decisions cannot access voluntary assisted dying. Functionally, that means that that can't be requested, for example, in an advanced care directive. The last one I want to highlight in this context is age. In other places in Australia, a person can only access voluntary assisted dying if they're an adult aged 18 or over. This means that eligibility, an eligible 17-year-old couldn't access voluntary assisted dying, but an eligible 18-year-old could. We're really interested in your clinical views about how that might be available to young people who are mature enough to make their own decisions. If they otherwise meet all the other eligibility criteria. The second topic is the role of health professionals. I can say that today in the broad sense in that kind of covering any folks that are providing health services in the ACT. So particularly including registered medical practitioners and registered health practitioners. The experience around Australia predominantly is two trained qualified doctors or specialists. Guiding the person through the process of requesting a bad procedure. And obtaining the substance as well. Now, what we're hearing in other states is that the kind of key operational challenge is finding folks that are willing and able to participate in that process. Particularly qualified doctors, you know, from a training and access perspective. So we're really interested in your thoughts on whether the scope of practice for voluntary assisted dying should include other health professionals such as nurse practitioners. And whether they should be permitted to assess someone's eligibility and guide them through the process, which we hope to legislate for. Last thing in this context is how conscientious objection should be managed. In the ACT, obviously, we're a proud human rights jurisdiction, which is guided by our 2004 Human Rights Act. It requires all public authorities, but also our laws to be, you know, to some extent compliant with human rights, but also accommodate them in the drafting process. And so kind of acknowledging that overlay, we're wondering who should be permitted to conscientiously object to being involved in a bad process? If there's anything that health professionals should be required to do if they conscientiously object, like provide information or refer the applicant to another provider? And whether health professionals should be required to declare that objection? The third global topic is the process itself accessing voluntary assisted dying procedures. Which includes how to protect a person from undue pressure and safeguard the substance and make sure it's handled appropriately. Fourth topic is the role of health services, which is particularly important if a health service like a hospital, palliative care hospice. Or aged care facility has a policy of not supporting access to voluntary assisted dying for conscientious or religious reasons. Fifth topic is monitoring compliance, which includes how to balance protections for health professionals while monitoring and making sure our system is effective. With appropriate avenues for review. Probably all. That leads me to the end of what I'm going to say today. So just with that overlay of the areas of focus that we're really welcoming feedback on. I guess I just really want to thank you all for the generosity in your time, effort and spirit to kind of be here and participate in the discussion. And with that, I'll kind of hand back over to Janet to take it to the next stage. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Daniel, and really great to have you here today. I also want to acknowledge the particular contribution that's been made by the Clinical Reference Group here that have given up their time throughout the process of the drafting of the legislation and the discussion paper to have input into. The endpoint that we've got to. But now I would like to get the IT team to come put Claire's presentation up. And welcome Dr. Claire Fellingham. Claire is a Senior Staff Specialist in the Intensive Care Unit at Royal Perth Hospital and is the Voluntary Assisted Dying Clinical Lead for the East Metropolitan Health Service. So Claire was instrumental in the implementation of voluntary assisted dying for East Metro in Western Australia. And has got some really great insight into how things have gone. And as I say, is really happy to answer any and all questions that you might have.
Great. Thanks very much, Janet. Can I just check everyone can hear me okay? And hopefully see my presentation very soon. Perfect. Everyone hear me okay? Yes, good. Fantastic. So thanks very much for having me today. It's really great actually to just hear the. Introduction and really just realise how deeply and how well you're actually thinking about how this law might look in practice because it's. Don't know how I got muted there. Sorry. Here I am, back again. Fantastic to hear how hard and how deeply you're thinking about all the issues that might arise as a result of voluntary assisted dying legislation. Because it's very hard to sort of conceive of how something's going to work in practice when you're really just setting a precedent. To work out, you know, how it's going to work when there's nothing really that's gone before it that's like it. I've lost my presentation there. All right. So. Really, the overview of this presentation is that I'm going to give you a bit of an introduction, an overview of how the process runs, as I said, in WA. So in terms of our eligibility and the process for a person accessing voluntary assisted dying. Tell you a little bit about our experience across East Metro Health Service. I actually feel I need to knock myself down a notch. I'm only a lowly anaesthetist. I'm not a. An intensivist. I don't think I was ever clever enough to be one. But I'm an anaesthetist working at Royal Perth Bentley Group, which is part of the East Metro Network. I also will then offer you some statewide data. We have, of course, just had our first first board report for our one year of operations. And then a couple of reflections, some pearls of wisdom, and then hopefully leave a lot of time for Q and A at the end. And it looks like. You know, typing into the chat function and me just reading and answering those questions is often the quickest way to be able to facilitate. The most amount in a given time. So obviously, I also just want to begin with a bit of an acknowledgement. You know, this is an enormous topic. It's divisive, it's confronting, and it is for many people very morally controversial. But it is going to become legal and you guys are in a fantastic position with the opportunity to actually begin to influence this law. As it's being developed and really make it the best possible that is most applicable to your population. So thank you for inviting me to speak. The introductions are mostly done, but a little extra background. I'm obviously a Brit. As I said, I'm an anaesthetist rather than an intensivist. I also did some palliative care training at the end of my anaesthetic training and I hold a clinical diploma. And I'm currently studying for a Master of Bioethics through Monash. And I led the clinical implementation of VAD from the 1st of February, so nearly over two years. And I've acted as a voluntary assisted dying practitioner also for nearly two years now. So since the very first day that it became a legally available option in WA. I don't need to remind you, I'm sure that WA is a fairly enormous place. I am very, very pleased that I don't work for our country health service because they have had a very unenviable task trying to. Ensure equity of access to our population scattered through those very, very far-flung and remote regions of WA. I work for East Metro. That's one of four, sorry, three rather, Metro Health Boards, North, East and South. West, of course, is in the ocean, so nobody's over there. In my hospital network, we have five hospitals and we're very interesting, the brackets at the end of the spectrum. Within our three, five hospitals, we have one which is a hospice and it's one of only two secular, public-funded hospices in the whole of WA. So they have. Had, in inverted commas, I suppose, had to accept patients or we've had to work together very collaboratively. To look after patients for whom voluntary assisted dying is part of their end-of-life care. And we also have one non-participant hospital, a hospital under the umbrella of the Catholic St John of God organisation. Who have elected and been allowed to not participate, so to not offer voluntary assisted dying to anyone within their hospital grounds. All in all, we offer our services to nearly three-quarters of a million patients and we had eight and a half thousand staff members to educate and make aware of this legislation. So in WA, our eligibility criteria are pretty strict. You must be an adult over the age of 18. You have to be a citizen or permanent resident. And you must have resided in WA for greater than 12 months prior to making your request for VAD, which of course in COVID times hasn't been particularly challenging to prove. In keeping with most of the laws around WA and many of them around the world as well. The person must have at least one terminal diagnosis. That's something that is expected on the balance of probabilities is the term that we use. To end their life within six months if it's any process or 12 months if that process is neurodegenerative. Acknowledging that some people do lose either physical or mental capacity in the context of something such as motor neurone disease. The person must be suffering and they must be suffering in a manner that they consider intolerable and that we have taken reasonable steps to try and alleviate. And they also have to be competent. And this is really, really important. Capacity to consent to VAD and competency throughout the process is mandatory up to and including the day of administration of the substance if the person. Person wishes to take the journey that far. And it is tested at every single opportunity. Clearly, the person must be free of coercion. And again, that is checked at every time that there is a patient contact in the process. And they must make an enduring request. It's not just a knee-jerk response to a bad weekend of pain or difficulty, you know, in some other realm. Our process in Western Australia is a 10-step process. I think it's going to be relatively similar to yours, certainly similar to Victoria. And the Queensland legislation. The person must make a first request. They then undergo two independent medical assessments by two independent trained practitioners, trained in the administration of VAD. They need to make two further requests, one written and one that can be verbal. And then there is a final review of all the paperwork and administration decision and a script is written. The medication is then supplied and the person chooses whether or not to use it. And then the 10th step, of course, is death certification. And I'm just going to pop up, oh, I can't pop it up, but the, there is a slide I've got which is a voluntary assisted dying process in Victoria, which. Which sort of gives you an idea that really the coordinating medical practitioner, the first person who does the first assessment. Becomes the overarching person involved in somebody's care. And really, they follow the person through and they walk with them at every step of their VAD journey. Our practitioner eligibility, I'm just checking whether anyone's managed to get the slides up. No, sorry. Practitioner eligibility is slightly different from our Victorian colleagues. Our coordinating or consulting practitioners need to both be specialists in their own right and they need to have held specialist registration for greater than one year. Or they need to be a general practitioner with general registration for greater than 10 years. They can be overseas-trained specialists, so they can sort of circumvent those criterion. But that's on a case-by-case basis, the Department of Health approval. And importantly, indifferent from the Victorian legislation, they don't need to be a specialist in the illness. That was felt to be. An unnecessary hindrance to the process being able to proceed. It certainly was the case in Victoria. That what I think has come about through, partly through the incongruence of numbers with the number in Victoria and then the number of people being able to access VAD in WA. That actually needing to see a specialist in the illness was getting in the way because, first of all, many specialists may be conscientious objectors and so can't actually offer that service to patients. But also because at institutional level, there were institutions that were able to. Say that their practitioners were not allowed to be part of a VAD process. And then there literally weren't any other specialists for somebody to go and see in the whole of the state of Victoria. So the process just was stopped in its tracks. We have a third type of practitioner, again, different from the Victorians. We have administering practitioners. Now, they tend to be the coordinating or the consulting practitioner, but they could also be a nurse practitioner with over two years of experience. Clearly, all these people need to be unrelated to the patient, not known beneficiaries in the patient's will and have undertaken the Department of Health mandatory training for VAD and kept that up to date. So we're lucky enough, as I said, to have some information back from our board in relation to who's offering these services. And we're finding about just less than 50% of patients are being offered voluntary assisted dying through general practitioners. Now, interestingly, not necessarily their general practitioner. But GPs are about 50% of the people who have trained to offer voluntary assisted dying. The remainder, interestingly, the next most common group are psychiatrists, followed by anaesthetists, ED specialists and then neurologists and hematologists. And we've got a couple of geriatricians, a couple of people from palliative care. And interestingly, very, very, very few people from the world of oncology. I think we now have two trained specialists in the world of oncology. And again, that was not thought to be. How it was going to go, but that's how it's worked out in WA. Fantastic. I see we've got the slides up. Thank you, everybody. In terms of who is coordinating voluntary assisted dying, we have, like many of the other models, a statewide care navigator service. This is old information. They started off funded at three FTE, which equated to one full-time clinical nurse consultant and three care coordinators. I'm pretty sure now they're up to five FTE based on the volume of practice they're doing. Still one CNC but six care coordinators. With a varied range of backgrounds, including nursing, social work and physiotherapy. They're available. Oh no, there it is again. Come back. Absolutely staggering. Obviously, the interactions can be a simple phone call looking for advice or information. And they typically are taking on about 45 new patients each month. And on an average month, they're actually looking after about 120 patients at any one time. So that's the new patients plus the follow-ups and plus the referrals. Of their interactions, 10%, so just over 600 people, were literally patients looking for assistance and linking them up with a practitioner. So this is. This is a huge number, considering our modeling predicted about 60 deaths in the first year. Similarly, the pharmacy service have had to be incrementally increased. I think they're now double their number within 18 months of operation. Because they have gone to supply the medication over 237 times. And travelled all over the state of WA in order to be able to dispense that with that chain of custody. Relating to somewhere between five and 31 journeys per month, bearing in mind there are five pharmacists to be able to go here, there and everywhere. Our voluntary assisted dying board was convened on the 1st of July and met on the 2nd of July for the first time, 2021. It consists of five members who essentially have oversight over WA, who have between them. Somewhere between 150 and 200 years of either clinical medical practice, legal practice. Or ministerial and parliamentary practice. So they're incredibly senior and capable. People who've been drawn from all over the spectrum, appointed by the Minister of Health for minimum three-year terms. And they met monthly for the first 12 months of operations. They scrutinized at least 20% of cases. They randomly pulled 20% of the cases each month to assess them for compliance with the Act. But they also reviewed 75 cases independently or separately. And they were typically the ones that were the not straightforward ones. So they're not. Somebody just very clearly at the end of a cancer journey dying, you know, very clearly eligible in all ways and moving on. So they reviewed them. Of those, four reported complications, so only 2.7%. Those complications relating to administration of the substance orally. In relation to vomiting or coughing or the person taking what was perceived to be a long time to die according to what was felt to be a normal expected time. But no complications inasmuch as the substance not working. All patients did go on to die. There were just things that were. Out of keeping with the exact sort of perfect way that we would have liked it to have gone. And in that one year, they've only made one referral. So the board have the ability to refer doctors to APRA, to the police, to the coroner, you know, they have. They have the ability to refer anybody who they feel is not operating within the letter of the law. And during that time, they only made one referral and that was to the CEO of Department of Health, really in relation to timely substance disposal. So if a practitioner. Is in possession of the substance and the person dies either through administration of only part of the substance, so there's some left. Or they die prior to administration, the practitioner only has two days to dispose of the substance and that wasn't followed in one case. So. So really, in terms of all those 190 deaths, a very, very small proportion of them had an issue that was flagged by the board. And none of those issues were significant issues that were raised. So just a couple of my own personal reflections on the VAD and then very happy to take any questions at the end. It is a planned process. It is intentional and it is purposeful. It is not a spur of the moment decision and it is not easy. It's long-winded and it's laborious. And by that very token, I believe, and I've looked after a lot of patients myself now, it would be very, very, very hard to subvert this process, to coerce someone into it, to bully it, to not have the capacity to follow this through. And if you take nothing home from today, it really isn't, it really isn't suicide. You know, suicide is often lonely and violent and it leaves behind. A trail of devastation in its wake with suffering wreaked on the people left behind that often can last forever. Whereas. Voluntary assisted dying is actually so well-supported and so carefully curated to be exactly in accordance with a person's wishes that it is actually the direct opposite. It's truly patient-centered care, patient-centered, patient-driven and patient-directed. It's supported in every respect. We have a wonderful collaborative relationship with most of the specialists that we. Look to, we turn to for help with prognostication and specialists involved in a patient's care. With our palliative care colleagues, as I said, we work very, very closely with them and support them and they support us in our, you know, currently separate service provisions. Our other VAD practitioners, we all support each other fantastically well, as do the care navigators and the pharmacy service. And we're actually all included in the community of practice. Different from the Victorian model where the community of practice only includes VAD providers. We include all our navigators, our program managers and our pharmacy service. And I think that's really important. It's driven at a patient's pace. It's very collaborative and a very, very respectful process. And the assessment itself often comes as an enormous relief and an anxiolytic to patients and their relatives. Clearly, the death of a loved one is never a good thing, but voluntary assisted dying can offer what people want ultimately, which is a good death. And by that, they mean that it's peaceful and it's dignified, it's calm and it's gentle. It's compassionate, it's truly focused on them. And time and time and again, these are exactly the words that are reflected back to us by the relatives who've. And time and time and again, these are exactly the words that are reflected back to us by the relatives who've witnessed the the unfolding of this journey. That is exactly the way that he or she would have wanted it to go. A couple of little pearls of wisdom. All patients are entitled to be assessed. We, part of our law is that it's not up to anyone other than a V A D practitioner to determine eligibility. So all patients are entitled to be assessed on or referred and assessed. And not all patients will make it. A voluntary assisted dying assessment is hugely palliative in itself. I would say at least fifty percent of the patients that I meet are just so relieved and unburdened by being able to be seen and heard on this journey that actually they relax into their dying process and they die of natural causes. And that's fine. That is not an issue. That is not a failure of this process. That's great. Um in an ineligibility is the hardest thing of all to deal with and you really need to have some very good um legislated follow-up for uh managing patients who are ineligible and uh patients who uh may go on to have quite a significant grief reaction in relationship to that. The professional support is is quite extraordinary. The the people I work with in this space are amongst some of the most dedicated and motivated and selfless human beings I've ever had the pleasure to meet. The gratitude from families is overwhelming and voluntary assisted dying for me is actually enriching and life-affirming and filled with meaning. Since you are in this absolutely incredible position of being able to influence the legislation and you're already thinking about some of the more challenging aspects, I thought I'd just add some of the things that I'd like to see change and evolve uh in in the, in the sort of growth and and development of voluntary assisted dying. I personally would like to see rigid timeframes removed. Um in Canada, they use the term death is reasonably foreseeable. Um six months is very hard to prognosticate. I think the Queenslanders have realised that and they've just made it twelve months for everybody with any condition. Six months is very, very hard to try and squash a box into. Um we, and this again, this is probably very far down the track, but we would love to see the ability to include a request for V A D in an advanced health directive, particularly for people who have uh conditioning, conditions where they will likely lose capacity during the process or a dementing condition that will lead to a long and slow and very, very difficult death. We would like to see the Commonwealth Criminal Code revised to allow for more service provision via telehealth. I don't believe that it would be right to administer the whole of voluntary assisted dying through telehealth. I think you need some face-to-face contact with patients, but with a state as vast as W A, we are really hampered in offering equity of access to patients because of the perception that voluntary assisted dying, euthanasia and an incitement to suicide are covered by that Commonwealth Criminal Code. Uh we would also like to see uh a a a more uh in-depth discussion in relation to institutional objection to service provision and why that can be um accepted as as being okay when this is actually a legally available option to anyone else outside of that institution. And I know uh of a number of patients I've cared for whose voluntary assisted dying journey has been very complicated by not being able to be offered the care in the hospital that they have spent most of their prior health journey in. And then, of course, the consideration of mature minors. I'm, you know, this is such a difficult subject. I'm not even going to go there with anything I could suggest. But we all know that there are some very grown-up seventeen-year-olds, even sixteen-year-olds. We're all aware of Gillick competence. We're all aware that there are challenges um with patients uh in in those sort of um realms of life and and it does need consideration. Uh so just final slide, I promise, I just wanted to reinforce unless you hadn't grasped it already. It is an immense privilege to be involved, from my perspective, so deeply and intimately in somebody else's life at a time of such significant vulnerability and to be able to offer them real, real, you know, support and real hope that that their fears can be allayed and that they can die peacefully and with dignity. And as a result, the things that these people have taught me allow me to live more deliberately and seek the joy in everything. And if we just flick to the final one, I'm just going to leave everybody with um uh a very big thank you for having me. Uh sorry for all the A V glitches. It's almost inevitable, really. Um but if anyone is uh ask, gonna ask the question about resources, where can I find some more information about this? Or you're a bit on the fence, you're not quite sure how you feel about voluntary assisted dying. The podcast, there's two series of podcasts dating back to two thousand and fifteen that Andrew Denton made. Really, really fabulously researched, very, very in-depth, very balanced. He's gone all over the world looking at what happens everywhere. And that podcast is freely available through your normal um streaming services. And then to read Stephanie Green's book, Stephanie Green is a medical assistance in dying practitioner in Canada who's been active for about five years. And she's written a book um that doesn't mess around. It's called This Is Assisted Dying, A Doctor's Story of Empowering Patients at the End of Life. And I think that, for me, just really sums up exactly what voluntary assisted dying is all about. So thank you very much.
So I'm just gonna jump back in here now and um just grab our roving mics here. And we'll also bring up the chat feature. Um first, thank you so much, Dr. Fellingham, for that um wonderfully um involved presentation. So much to cover in there. I'm just gonna bring up the chat. So if anyone online has any questions for Dr. Fellingham, they might wanna pop into the chat. That would be great. Um and anyone in the room will just get the microphone to you. So just pop your hand up. I'll just, just need to see the chat. Yeah, fabulous.
Yeah, there's nothing in the chat as yet.
Okay, great. Is anyone in the room that has any questions? I think I might have just seen someone put their hand up online. Perhaps I might get that person to ask their question. No, they might have changed their mind.
I often find the best way with these chats is if everyone types it in and I can read it and answer it, rather than trying to sort of work out who's got their hand up and stuff like that. Uh good, so somebody, I won't say who's asking the questions, but somebody's popped up, says, thanks, Claire. Is there a cost to the patient or is it Medicare-funded? Very interesting question. So the cost to the patient from, in my practice, is nothing at all. I am funded uh only at point two F T, but nevertheless funded by East Metro to act as a clinical lead, a V A D practitioner and anything. So I don't offer, I don't charge a fee for service. And uh from my understanding, none of the colleagues that I work with do charge either. And the medications themselves are P B S funded, so you don't, the person doesn't have to pay for the um substance. Uh and that, again, is to ensure equity of access, to make sure it's not only available to people who have private health or who can afford healthcare. It is not Medicare-funded and this is a very big um issue currently because there is no funding model. So the vast majority of people are um essentially just cramming V A D practice into their standard practice, which presents huge issues uh in already busy outpatient clinics. Clearly, very, very challenging for general practitioners with fifteen-minute slots to be able to offer V A D, particularly if they are not the normal doctor for that patient. So there are no Medicare item numbers, there is no Medicare funding. All I can say is that with you, uh and then hopefully Northern Territory coming on board, there will then be voluntary assisted dying laws across the whole of Australia. And then it will be much, much easier to negotiate at a federal level for Medicare funding. So watch this space. Um the next question was, uh is there any funding for primary care doctors to visit patients? So I know what happens here in W A is that there is, and sorry, I'm not a G P, so I I can't answer this hundred percent, but there is a um Medicare item number for an extended home visit in the order of a few hundred dollars. And I know people do use that to offer patients visits at home and that seems to be a very accepted um part of practice. I just go out and see people on my my own time and that's just the way that I I do the work. But there certainly is a way of doing it. I also do know of other colleagues who um have chosen to develop their own funding model. There are funding models out there. The New Zealanders gazetted their fees um straight up when they were beginning their legislation. It's actually quite a generous remuneration package that we're trying to sort of persuade Medicare to take on board. Um and I know that some people have sort of looked at those fees, looked at Cam McLaren's fees, who's one of the most uh uh active practitioners in Victoria. He he also um will release his fees to in interested people. And and they sort of base a model on that and get informed financial consent from patients beforehand. But most of us will ask a patient if they can pay or if they're willing to pay, and if they are, great. And if they won't, um then we still offer the services anyway. Um so another question, I'll just read it. In Canberra, one of our two publicly funded hospitals is run by a private organisation with religious affiliations. Do you have any advice on how this can be managed in the early stages? Um I am weary of the institution preventing access for inpatients and barring practitioners who it employs from practising V A D. Look, I um should probably give you uh the there are lots of things I could say about that. I will give the more sort of sanitised and politically correct version of it. My strong feeling is that if there is a law that has been passed that allows an individual person to access voluntary assisted dying legally within the state that they live and they fulfil all the eligibility criteria that they should be able to access voluntary assisted dying irrespective of where their healthcare is being delivered. And I have an even stronger feeling that I do not believe that any institution should be able to bar um doctors who work or nurses who work for that organisation from supporting patients in a voluntary assisted dying journey, including offering assessments. Um I um I just think that it is not delivering compassionate care and it is not delivering what patients want uh and what they have asked for and what they have fought for the best part of forty years for prior to the Victorian law, which of course set off the domino effect to allow for this law. Um it is not suicide, it is not euthanasia, it is a different entity. And we need to really start talking about it with different language to help people to understand that. And it's also only offered to people who are already dying. These are people with a terminal illness. They're people who die anyway. Um that being said, how can it be managed in the early stages? We had, um we have a lot of meetings with our um faith-based providers, both at the Department of Health level and an insta- individual H S P level. I certainly worked very closely with our hospital in the Saint John of God Organisation, with their Director of Mission Services, with their executive group um to try and establish what they will and won't allow us to do. Uh but ultimately, the decisions were well above my pay grade. And uh the decision made by my executive group, so the people managing the whole of East Metro, was that the um that organisation seemed to be protected by law in 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 being allowed to have an institutional conscientious objection, so they are allowed to determine how to operate. So, look, I I could speak a lot about it. I think ultimately, what we have to remember is that there are individual human beings who are suffering um by being denied access to voluntary assisted dying. And it is overwhelmingly community-supported. Uh over eighty percent of people polled in W A, polled nationwide. Um you know, more than eighty percent of the community support it, so I don't know why you would be allowed not to offer it, particularly if you're a a faith-based institution who holds a public contract. So you are funded publicly to deliver a service to public patients. If you're a private entity, private institution, I guess you can kind of do what you want. But that's not our experience here in W A. They are an institution who are funded with public sector money and yet they're still allowed to um bar a patient from accessing something they're legally entitled to. And I just think that that's plain wrong. And I know that there is a very significant complaint um that's been made by a patient of mine's family in relation to that. So it may yet change. We'll see. Anyway, I'll stop talking about that and and move on to the next question. As long as everyone's happy for me to just keep talking. Um, do you get any referrals from patients admitted as inpatients and how are those referrals processed? Yes, absolutely. And that is a really big thing to start considering in your law because it's taken everybody by surprise here in Victoria. It seems to be mostly happening in the um primary care sector and most people are administering the substance at home. Uh in W A, we're seeing fifty-fifty patients um in hospital, in the hospital setting and fifty-fifty patients actually wanting administration in hospital, which puts a massive burden. And um what we did, and it, this was fantastic, and I'm sure in A C T it would work because you guys are obviously much smaller and hopefully collaborate really well. But we essentially got the policies and procedures from a colleague in Victoria. And we looked at those and we all got together as all the different H S Ps, so North, South, East and Wax. And we brainstormed the policy and procedure, we nuanced it for our own individual organisations and then we wrote and 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 sort of mandated and ratified individual policies and procedures. Our executive groups at the different hospitals decided what level of service provision that they would offer. And I'm pretty sure all of the health services said, yeah, we will support everyone in a voluntary assisted dying journey at every stage, including administration of the substance on site. If that's what the person wants. Obviously, this is public health, not those religious or faith-based institutions. Um and so that's what we wrote and that's what we've done. We have su- we have supported patients in an outpatient and inpatient um setting. Um is it allowed to know what medications are being prescribed for V A D? Yes, it is, but um we are bound by the Commonwealth Criminal Code uh inasmuch as I am not allowed to describe to you or say to you what those medications are because I would be in breach of the Commonwealth Criminal Code, which is um one of the massive challenges that we find in offering voluntary assisted dying, particularly, as I said, in those rural regions because we have to discuss the substances, what they are, how they're administered and what their intended outcome is. And unfortunately, according to the Commonwealth Criminal Code, that is viewed as um aiding and abetting a person's suicide. So I can't tell you what they are. All I can say is that there is a preparation for oral administration and one for intravenous administration. And both of them are similar to other things you might be able to look up on the internet, but that's as far as I can go. Um, oh, just a nice comment. Thank you for a fascinating presentation. I feel strongly about this and your passion and dedication are readily apparent. Well, thank you. And it is, I mean, it is astonishing, like this, honestly, this is not where I expected my life to go. Having done a small palliative care fellowship and found that it aren't, you know, posed more questions than it answered. But going about my day-to-day life as a consultant anaesthetist, wondering when this would ever enter my sphere of practice. And then becoming involved in the clinical leadership and then really just getting so caught up in the need for these laws and then in the patient's stories and the suffering and the vulnerability and the and the the meaning that there is and the purpose in this work um has actually changed the direction of my life. It has altered the course of my professional career. It's why I'm doing the masters and it's why I'm doing more and more of this work and less and less anaesthesia. So thank you. Um how do you ensure there is no coercion or other mental he- health issues when typically patients are only known for a short time? Great question. Definitely something that everybody's worried about and definitely something I was worried about at the beginning. Like, oh my god, how on earth am I gonna be able to determine somebody's capacity to consent to their own death? How on earth am I gonna be able to tell no one's bullying them or forcing them into it? What, you know, what about if they're depressed? Of course, they're depressed, they're dying. Oh my god, this is, this is just gonna be an absolute nightmare. All I can tell you is, I have been doing this now for nearly two years. These people, people who seek access to voluntary assisted dying, bearing in mind we're talking about one percent of all deaths in W A, which is pretty similar. I think the Netherlands is four percent, but most jurisdictions in the world with a V A D law, um it's about one percent of all deaths. They are, they're in that top, you know, they are the one percent of people. They are very self-determined. They are often very well-educated. They are often very health-literate. They are, they are people who have absolutely no problem convincing you that they know exactly what they're doing and why they're doing it. And yes, this is absolutely the right thing for me. Um some of them are depressed, absolutely. Do they have depressed that depression or anxiety or a mental health condition that affects their capacity? Very rarely. And if I have any concerns about their capacity, I refer them to one of my psychiatry colleagues. And as I, well, I don't know if you saw that slide, but ten percent of our practitioners are psychiatrists. They're really awesome, awesome group of people to have on side and they really help us when there are questions about a patient's capacity. In terms of coercion, I've had one patient personally that I couldn't determine whether or not she was truly making a request for voluntary assisted dying. It seemed more desire to hasten death statements and other things that are quite common in someone who's moving towards the end of their life. It was very difficult. It was very challenging. It involved a lot of collaborative meetings with the patients, their family members. And ultimately, probably one of the hardest family meetings I've ever had with with everybody and with their palliative care providers. And um and it lasted for about two hours. I don't think I've ever sweated as much. But ultimately, I I had to make that patient ineligible. I could not convince myself that that person was eligible. So the, and so that's once, that's once that that's ever happened. So the, and so that's once, that's once that that's ever happened. Um, what happens to patients with dementia who've documented?
Got another question in the room as well, when you get maybe to this one and then we'll.
Oh yeah, go for it, go for it.
Okay, we'll jump to this one here.
So my question was in relation to your uh figure of thirty four deaths that have been majorly.
Yes.
The process of V A D. Uh, that this does not happen due to a delay in administering medication?
Yeah, thank you for that. Yeah, so to my knowledge, those patients, um literally, I have acted as coordinating practitioner for most of those people. And most of them have just been so comforted to know what's there, that it's out there, that they can use a voluntary assisted dying substance if they want, that actually they they often don't need to. And again, that's, that's not um, that's not a problem. You know, that's something that we see reflected in the world. Oregon, of course, have had the law for the longest since nineteen ninety-seven. And about forty percent of patients in possession of their voluntary assisted dying substance don't ever go on to use it. They just allow their death to occur through natural causes, because they've just got that that strategy that if things get too tough, they can use it. But actually, they're no longer afraid of dying. And that, for me, is the real embodiment of why these laws are so important. It removes the fear and the anxiety surrounding death, because it gives people the assurance that they can do it on those terms. Yes, some people leave it too late and only ask for voluntary assisted dying when they're very, very close to the end of their life. They can actually kind of feel themselves dying already, so some people may have run out of time. But not through inequity of access. In the, in the metro area, we really are a- are able to support patients pretty much a hundred percent of the time if they really want to die by voluntary assisted dying.
Thank you. My other part of the question was, how do you become a qualified V A D physician? What's the process?
How do you become a voluntary assisted dying practitioner, did you say?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, so we, I'm sure you guys will have a similar model, that there is an online training package uh designed by Q U T, so the the sort of medical legal guys over at the University of Queensland. Um, that is quite long-winded and laborious. It takes about six to eight hours to do. And so for us, that that's funded uh as like a sort of professional development exercise. And at the end of that training, there is an open book exam where you can refer back to the guidelines, acknowledging that hours are about three hundred and sixty pages long, so you're not expected to just kind of retain all that information. Um, and in relation to that exam, you you then have to pass the exam with more than ninety-five percent, I think. Ninety-four, ninety-five percent. And only after all of that are you then um eligible to uh become a voluntary assisted dying practitioner. And that training is valid for three years, provided nothing changes in relation to your underlying um uh medical registration, so you don't have any conditions or anything imposed on your normal APRA registration. And then, as I mentioned before, I may have got a bit lost in the presentation, to even be eligible for the voluntary assisted dying training, you have to be a specialist in your own right, practising for at least a year or a G P with ten years of experience. And you have to have uh no conditions or or pu- or anything on your registration. And you have to have two professional referees who are willing to answer questions from the voluntary assisted dying board in relation to your clinical practice and whether they've any, ever had any concerns in relation to your um upstandingness, I guess is probably the right way of putting it. So it's a very, very small and well-selected group of people. It's not just kind of anybody.
Thank you. We have another question from the room.
Thank you very much for your impressive presentation. Just, I have a question here. I am accredited, it didn't be for Tasmania. And the barrier for us to continue for full-time specialis- is it is not affiliated or funded by the the organisation. The V M O is easy to do the clinic, because they have more flexibility. But the staff specialist has difficulty to do this. I don't know what is the experience in W A, how the full-time specialist will do the clinic?
Um, sorry, again, the microphone's really breaking up. Wa- was the question in relation to how on earth do people fit this into their normal clinical practice?
No, no, I'm saying that I am accredited A N P from Tasmania. And the main o- obstacle for us as a specialist with a clinic, if the clinic is not accredited by the the organisation as a full-time specialist, it will clash with other clinics. But the V M O have full flexibility to do the clinic, because we own this time. I do not own my time. So how it works in W A for the staff specialists?
So with with specialists who aren't working in full-time practice or who are registered in another health jurisdiction, but offering a sort of consultative clinic, is that the question?
Yes.
Yes. Um, so uh full, the the one year of practice or ten year of practice is is full-time or a full-time equivalent. So you could have practised for two years at point five and still be eligible. Again, the voluntary assisted dying board have the ability to um accept or decline requests to be practitioners on a case-by-case basis. So for instance, we have a Canadian specialist who, of course, in Canada there is a law, um and she wished to participate in voluntary assisted dying, even though she hadn't held her specialist registration for over a year and she was an overseas-trained practitioner. And we applied to the board on a case-by-case basis. I would, I would strongly suggest, and I would hope, that in your legislation that you're drafting in the A C T, that given how, you know, this work isn't for everybody and there are not a huge amount of people beating the door down to try and do this work, that the 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 um people who are determining who your practitioners should be give very serious quite like consideration to those things that you've just raised. And allow for people who are really motivated and really want to offer these services to be accredited to provide them uh within the framework of whatever law that you develop, because in W A it is very challenging. And unfortunately, that person who had a very strong feeling wanting to uh be a V A D practitioner was was actually denied, because they felt that they weren't able to ratify enough of their um their uh credentials uh from overseas. And that was really unfortunate and very, very disappointing, and we could really have done with an extra person to swell our ranks. Um, within W A, my understanding is that the majority of our healthcare is offered even in a tedy health setting by practitioners within W A. So I I'm not sure that we kind of outsource from from any other um more, any other state or territory. I actually don't know the answer to that question, but I would think that um eh eh that it would, it would typically be people within W A. Does that answer the question?
No.
No.
If you are accredited A N P and you are allowed to do the clinic, how will you do the clinic in the organisation, in your hospital, when you have a full-time job? This was the barrier in Tasmania. The V M O have full flexibility to do clinics at any time, but the specialist, his time is for you. If there is anything in your process I consider for the for the resolution to exempt the full-time specialist from some clinics in his work, to do this, yeah, what not?
I see. So the question relating to if someone's already on a one F T E contract, so they're already working full-time, how would they be able to be exempted to do this work? Um, that is a very good question and that is definitely something that we've encountered. So again, a number of psychiatry colleagues that I have um uh have are on a one F T E contract and have asked to be exempted or asked to be to work over their one F T E, which in W A is not actually legal anymore, like you're not allowed to be paid in the public sector more than one F T E. Um, and ultimately, what that's unfortunately boiled down to is what their direct supervisor or head of department or line manager will allow them to do. So some of my colleagues have been allowed to operate um, to offer voluntary assisted dying as part of their contract. Some people have asked to drop part of their contract to pick up like a point two or a point four F T E. Other people who weren't working a full-time equivalent have negotiated individual agreements with empathetic um directors of clinical service or or heads of department. But ultimately, um, there is no sort of standard unified model. And it is very difficult and very frustrating, because we're all trying to provide a service for which none existed previously. And yet, you know, whereas the care navigators have got extra funding, because they have shown that there is this this demand for service and the pharmacy service have got extra funding and extra people, because they've shown there's a demand for service. Somehow, the doctors and the people administering V A D and actually doing it at the coalface are being expected to just incorporate it into their clinical practice or find time that they don't have or negotiate their own arrangements, which isn't really a a very sustainable model of practice. So yeah, good, good question.
I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to interrupt there. We've just run out of time, so I'm just gonna hand back to um to Dr Sigari.
Sure.
So, not a doctor while I've promoted you to being an intensivist, Claire, I've been promoted to being a doctor. Um, I'm afraid that for the people in the auditorium, we've actually got the next group waiting to come in, which is why we're gonna need to step out. Now, Claire has indicated that she has some time and is able to continue online. So you can join in the Webex on your personal devices or on your phone. For the questions that were about to be asked, we will capture those and then share it out to the group, um probably using the chat function and.
Yeah, we're actually up till two.
Oh, we've got till two? Have they gone away?
Uh, we'll put them away till two.
Okay, so actually, you can ask your question. Those of you who can stay, we have until two. Claire, I am going to have to leave for my next meeting, so I just want to really thank you for your generosity. I think that sharing of um experience is incredibly valuable. To the question about um how we make time for people to undertake this, that's something that we organisationally will need to work through in the planning for implementation. And certainly, to Claire's point, there were multiple ways it was done in Western Australia, certainly um in the H S P that I worked in, I paid my clinicians over and above for when they were undertaking those duties outside of their work time. So it is really variable. We will need to work through that as an organisation with our clinicians around how we might do that. So um, I'm gonna thank you, Claire, and thank you for being willing to continue the discussion online. So we do therefore have the auditorium until two and those online can stay online and continue that conversation, but thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Um. I don't know if anyone else is gonna take over to host or if I'll, I might just, there's a few more questions. I'm afraid when I dropped out of the meeting, I think I lost some questions, but there's a few more here from ten twenty-six onwards. Are you happy if I just go back to the online chat function?
Yeah, keep going with that. There's still a couple of people in the room, so they might have questions, but if you wanna run it that way, and I'll interject if there's any further in the room.
Great. Um, so what's the rationale behind requiring a G P to be in practice for ten years versus one year for other specialists? Uh, I didn't write that part of the law, so I can only hazard a guess. And I think what that relates to is that um to go into general practice, my understanding is that you can go into it um really quite early on, right at the sort of beginning of your career, uh only a couple of years out of medical school. Um, whereas when, if your training, say, to be a cardiologist or a anaesthetist or whatever, then you've got at least sort of five to seven years minimum of specialist training as a sort of R M O and a registrar and everything before and then you do fellowships before you go on to be a specialist. So I think the specialist is is actually a fully-fledged consultant in that specialty. It's not just a um a a V M O or or a C M P or something like that. I don't know what you you call them in A C T. But I think it was really to just reflect that it's not a junior doctor. It's somebody who's got a lot of experience, caring for a lot of patients over a long period of time and has seen things happen in the end-of-life care spectrum, is aware of of um, you know, ethical challenges that have arisen. Is is, you know, has sort of proven their their experience, if you, if that makes sense. So I I I, that's my assumption as to why it is. Um, uh, the question about what is the oral medication versus the I V for V A D? As I said previously, I can't actually say, if I told you what the medications are online, I would be in breach of the Commonwealth Criminal Code and I could technically be arrested for that, so I can't. All I would say to you is that um some of them are medications you might be familiar with and you can look them up on the internet. Um, the uh, cannot hear. I have a question about gender balance in seekers of V A D. Uh, but I'm not sure what that question is, if it's about men versus women or people are with gender fluidity who are seeking V A D. I'm not sure what that is. So if someone wants to add and clarify. Um, and then, yeah, most people were struggling to hear, so it wasn't just me, the main microphone was a bit blocky. So that's all the questions on the chat. Are there any other questions in the room?
Yeah, I'll just do a check. Has anyone else got any other questions? No, I don't think so. There's just, one more's just popped onto the chat.
Oh, yeah. Uh, G P's generally required to have a G P specialist qualification, minimum five years and seven to ten before you're fellowed. I think that's what it means. So then, you know, if you're fellowed, then you've had the ten years of experience. It's not ten years after you get your fellowship. I I don't think that would be a very strange thing to to say. I think it's really just to try and delineate a senior from a junior doctor and to ensure that the people who are offering V A D are offering it, because they they're pretty long in the tooth and they really understand everything that's gone on. Um, would be interested in how patients with dementia might pursue V A D at a certain point in their life. I mean, this is, this is the sadness, really. Somebody with dementia is, as as everybody else in W A, they're they're entitled to be assessed for eligibility, but almost always, a dementing process overtakes and a person loses capacity before they get to the point where they're gonna die. And certainly, I've I've got a lot of colleagues, psychogeri- geriatric colleagues and neurologists who deal with some of the um congenital um and progressive, you know, neurodegenerative diseases like Huntington's, who are pretty devastated that uh those patients are excluded from being able to access voluntary assisted dying, because they can't make their wishes clear in an advanced health directive. And it is clear that those patients suffer terribly uh as their disease progresses and as they lose capacity. And that being one of the things that is so, so enormous in relation to their suffering. So again, you know, it's why I would be interested in incorporating it into my own advanced health directive. You know, if I get to the point where I no longer recognise the people that I love and I'm frightened just by being alive in my day-to-day existence, I would like to be able to enact V A D. But it would, it would almost certainly have to be practitioner-administered. And then obviously, we open up a very big Pandora's box in relation to abuse of the vulnerable and in relation to euthanasia as opposed to voluntary assisted dying. And they are very, very challenging spaces to work in, which is why, you know, the Canadians had a five-year review bill when they introduced their uh legislation in two thousand and sixteen. It was reviewed in twenty twenty-one and they felt it was still too challenged to legislate for, too challenging to legislate for. Similar with primary mental health conditions. It is so difficult to determine what somebody with a primary mental health condition or a primary dementing process, you know, at what point they can be eligible. It's, it's just a massive minefield. Um, uh, I think.
I just um, jump in there. Um, we've got, um, just one point to note is that the um consultation page, the USA page link has been popped in the chat. So anyone who's looking to provide their own feedback, that link is in the chat there that you can jump straight to. Um, I've got a question from a bit earlier where we had a bit of issue with the chat that I thought I might ask. Um, if you can answer, do patients need to meet all eligibility criteria or are some criteria weighted more than another? Or is it a number of them but not all applicable? Example, patients suf- with suffering needs um met by palliative care therapy presently, but in all other aspects might be eligible and seek V A D.
Yeah, excellent question. And I'm sorry if that um got uh got sort of missed in the, in the um in the presentation, because that slide was right at the beginning when we were having a lot of issues. Um, no, uh, every eligibility criterion must be fulfilled and all those criterion carry equal weight. Now, obviously, some of them are easier to prove than others. If you are over the age of eighteen, it's very easy to prove. If you're a citizen of Australia, it is quite easy to prove. Things like capacity and prognosis and suffering are harder to prove. Capacity um can fluctuate. People can have transient issues that affect their capacity. People can have uh significant or fundamental issues that affect their capacity. So capacity, um, the eligibility for capacity is is measured throughout. And and somebody could be found eligible on all counts at the beginning of a V A. And and somebody could be found eligible on all counts at the beginning of a V A D journey, but then lose capacity. And then, because they've lost that point of the eligibility, they are no longer eligible for the voluntary assisted dying process to continue. Similarly with coercion. If coercion is discovered, we've had one case in W A where a practitioner, who's very well-known to me, very, very senior, very capable, seen a lot of people, just had a really bad feeling that she couldn't really put her finger on in relation to a patient's request and the way that the family were um involved in that request. And so much so that after a lot of soul-searching and a lot of reflecting and a lot of speaking with other very, very senior people uh in terms of the care navigators and the voluntary assisted dying board, decided to um withdraw her her care of that patient and deem that patient ineligible on the basis that a coercive element could not be extricated from the potential in relation to that V A D request. And that was very, very challenging as well. Um, and the third, the other eligibility um was in relation to something else. What was that? Yeah, they're basically, they are all equally important and they must all be equally fulfilled. Suffering, that was it. So suffering, again, really, really hard. Um, at the beginning, when I was contemplating how on earth I was going to determine suffering and how much is enough? And what is, what is, um, you know, irreconcilable or or intolerable suffering? Ultimately, it is whatever the patient says it is. Suffering takes many forms. Suffering is individual. Suffering is context-dependent. Suffering is circumstantial, but suffering is what the person says it is. And the hardest thing in determining whether suffering is enough is actually having the guts to sit there and listen to somebody tell you how and why their life is so awful and all the steps that we have taken to try and alleviate that suffering. And yet, they are still suffering. And the really important thing in relation to that and in relation to determining whether they're eligible is, first of all, have we, you know, taken all reasonable steps to mitigate that? But second of all, acknowledging that a person is within their right to refuse treatments and to refuse care that may potentially reduce their suffering. But that is not, that is their decision to make. And actually, it's not ours to judge.
Okay, we have another question. Yep, we've got another question.
Mm-hmm.
Um. So this, talk about support for staff around providing V A D. What support will I be given if I don't want to engage in V A D? So that's probably a question from your experience um in Western Australia, the support given to those who don't want to engage.
Yeah, so I I've obviously, as you can imagine, I've got a million and one slides, and I didn't put the one about conscientious objection in. But we have the right to individual conscientious objection enshrined in our legislation. It's actually there for you to be able to read. If you look up V A D Act, W A, two thousand and nineteen, it is, it is fully enshrined in law that no healthcare practitioner should ever or would ever be forced to participate in voluntary assisted dying if that is against their will. And I made sure at the very beginning, when I was sort of mulling over how I would sort of lead the clinical leadership, that I would, I'm not, I wouldn't shy away from voluntary assisted dying. I'm not gonna sugarcoat it. I'm not gonna talk in euphemisms. I'm not gonna brush it under the carpet. It needs to be discussed for what it is. There needs to be an education campaign and there needs to be an awareness. But that is not in the form of telling people it's the right thing or shoving it down their throats. It is just to say, this is going to be a legally available option, and you need to be aware of its existence. But hand in hand with that came the reassurance that nobody would be forced to participate, that there were clear safeguards to prevent that, that, you know, only people trained to offer V A D can offer V A D. So it's already a self-selecting bunch, that there is a statewide care navigator service for information provision. So no one feels, has to feel beholden that they have to provide their patients information or access. They can just say, I'm sorry, I can't help you with that, but there is an organisation that can. And then, you know, the provision of V A D, the care of patients seeking access to V A D within the hospital network is um is is very much managed only by people who are willing to be part of the voluntary assisted dying process. And if, for instance, we have a person who wants to die using the substance in hospital, we will um identify the ward that they're either on or being admitted to. We'll work very closely with the nurse unit manager and with the ward clerk and with the staff development team to identify conscientious objectors and try and make sure that they're not rostered on. But also to identify conscientious providers and people who may or may not be trained in V A D, but who are willing to continue to care for patients who have voluntary assisted dying as part of their healthcare journey. And we have never found that to be an issue. It's 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 managed in a very respectful and collaborative and balanced way because the culture that was embedded from the very, very beginning, which is really important, the culture was one of openness and one of acceptance and one of curiosity, but one of respect for polarising views, acknowledging that this is a difficult subject. So hopefully, that answers that.
And there's a bit of a follow-up question just popped to the bottom of the chat around the practical emotional support as well. Can you see that?
I'll have a look at the bottom of the chat, sorry. Um.
That's right. Is there any practical slash emotional support if people don't want to engage and struggle with this coming up for them, just like there is debriefing support, et cetera, for people who do engage?
Sure. So again, what I can speak to is my experience and what I did in the implementation phase. So I worked very closely with our, we have a Royal Perth Bentley Group and an Armidale Calamunda wellbeing team. So actually, a group of people who, I guess, a bit like the employer assistance programme, but they're actually based, they have a physical location within our hospital. There are a number of trained uh people with backgrounds in counselling, psychology, psychotherapy, theology, um, uh, coaching, business support, like really, really wide, varied groups of people, but who who have uh prior to V A D and 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 also beyond that, a a role in offering wellbeing support for anyone who works for the organisation, who is challenged by anything that they encounter within their sphere of work. And we work very closely with them. And we offered um drop-in sessions for um for voluntary assisted dying, where anyone could come either face-to-face or anonymously joining online and had the ability to talk, to debrief, to ask questions. Um, again, they could ask them completely anonymously if they wanted to really get to to really understand the issues and the anxieties that existed and why people were feeling so confronted and then be able to offer them support in that respect. Um, the wellbeing team were also able to provide support on a one-to-one basis. We also, um, I put out a um a survey uh of all, went to all healthcare workers, in fact, to all staff, I'm sorry, eight and a half thousand staff. Uh, with different sort of questions that were asked, depending on whether you were a healthcare worker or not, like a P C A or or then like catering staff, maintenance, everything. Because anyone might be made aware of this. And really, again, trying to tease out what the anxieties were, what the worries were on an individual and then a sort of bigger level. And then every education that I gave, you know, if they were coming from specific wards, specific um specialty groups, I just went and tried to answer those questions and offered the ability to to talk and and really to to honour people's anxieties about this and people's worries and people's fears and and to support them in that respect. So I hope that you guys also have teams like that, wellbeing teams. I mean, I worked so collaboratively with the wellbeing team that one of the wellbeing chaplains is now my voluntary assisted dying program manager. And we work together every day of the week. So um, yeah, it 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 is there, but it's gotta be, it's gotta be kind of thought about. So thank you for raising that.
Thanks for that, Claire. Um, I've just, just to clarify, you said earlier that the people accessing, the gender split accessing was about one-to-one, didn't you?
Hmm.
Yeah, so that was just a bit of, there's just a clarity question a bit further up. Um, I think we might have to leave it there. Um, and I do feel like the questions could probably go on for days. But thank you so much for your for your contribution and and for everything that you've um raised and got a lot of people thinking about a lot of things today. So thank you so much. Um, a few claps on the screen that we can see and some thank yous from within the room. So thank you so much, and we will wrap it up there for today. Thank you.
Thanks for having me. And if anyone does wanna reach out, I'm claire.fellingham@health.wa.gov.au or you can just ring Royal Perth and get asked to be put through to me, that's fine. So yeah, you're doing a great job thinking about it hard and long and in reality. So keep up the good work.
Thank you so much. And the USA page is there for anyone else who wishes to provide any further feedback, open until the sixth of April. Thank you so much.
Lovely. Take care. Bye-bye.